But was it by yet the building? The building?
Uh, hey, on Rockwood Highway and uh, Rockville, the U N is Friday, I think it's Friday, uh, from four thirty.
So if you have our uh, attorney, uh, again, we have a court, they let me write the item number to prove this school project. This plan, uh, that they uh, approved. Someone will make a motion.
Oh, there's two packets, D D A packet and one community packet.
I make a motion, uh, for uh, for March fourth, uh, uh, uh. I second.
And the question was, how long has it been since that thing happened?
Uh-huh.
So both, uh, uh, down, uh, being right along to approve, it's approved by minutes of January tenth, uh. You had, I know everybody's here, they have a time to leave, to leave town. Have a, had a meeting, you know, for what, uh, what they're, we'll take a look at it. He's been supporting, less than.
Yeah.
He did a pretty job.
Mm-hmm.
Chapter nine is their public here.
Yeah.
I was amazed at how thorough he was in that I.
He organized it, yeah.
The only correction that I think he made is uh, refer. Cause there's not so much of it. Was he coming? First of all, his last name was, he's been you?
Uh, uh, right.
And uh, he even had, he spelled it correctly, so I think that's the only.
I'm sorry, what, what page is that on?
Oh, what? It's going to the course of the public here, uh, so.
It's uh, the second paragraph.
Okay.
Second thing. It starts with the car.
Down.
Down.
Okay.
The very last.
Young. Is here you are, are.
Yeah, I think it's a great, yeah, okay. So you can play.
Fourth, uh, I like the next one, uh, through. I second.
Okay, question on most, although the case is, can we try that thing out?
Uh-huh.
So the code, uh, uh, and then I told the uh, special needs, they were able to approve the uh, site plan for all of them. They had an opportunity to look at that, I hope. Thank you. I leave questions in reference to you. There you go, you have a question.
I'm gonna have the motion to be approved, uh, in February tenth, now we can. I second.
Uh, any question on most? Although the case is, can we try that thing out?
Uh-huh.
All right, so, okay, all right, um, we've got that, it appears, uh, going on to uh, is there any public comments? There a member of the public here?
Well, I do have one, uh, 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 one comment, uh, uh, about, uh, about, about the, um, I, I said, uh, 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 two comments. The, the one comment is, uh, it, it, it's about the, it's, it's about the old college school progress, that, that, and, 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 and the other comment is, it, it, it's, is my group, is, is, is Detroit, that's the state, well, you, 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 you wanna do after, you want, you want, you want to take over, take over, take over the pharmaceutical market project. Take over pharmaceutical market, you wanna do a pharmaceutical market? And how will we do, how will we do about, uh, how I doing that?
Well, that's, that's really an item for the D D A, I think. So we can take that up during the D D A meeting.
Okay.
Uh, as, as to garbage, you have any information?
Uh, the last, uh, that we heard was that the, the group that applied for rezoning and received the rezoning has backed out of the deal because there's a water leak in the building, uh, and water damage, and that happened, uh, immediately preceding their closing date. So, they, they backed out of the deal, so the project is.
There was no way that, uh, they couldn't have gotten this group or let the cost, you know, that the.
I, I talked to them and I, I pleaded them to, uh, to consider, you know, staying involved, but they said that just not sure what all the damages are, not sure what all the mold impact are gonna be, and I talked to them about the brownfield might be too overused to clean up, all that, but, you know, then they can't use it for other things, so they felt one way or the other, they were in worse shape because of that damage.
No one went into the, we have, well, the Dallas, they go in, actually, they do.
Who does, uh, the group that we've been, yes, they toured, they, they had a walkthrough before the closing.
After the water damage?
Um, I don't know if they went back in or not, but they said that in their conversations with the owner's representative, they were not taking care of it in a timely fashion, they were slowly getting the water out, the water was standing in there for a prolonged period of time, so they were really not.
Wasn't in there for more than a week, I remember when it happened, it was on the.
Yeah, I remember, since you called me, I called them, and, um, and I'm not sure exactly how long it was in there, but according to them, it, it was in tough work, it was in, you know, other areas of the building, and just hard to get out, so. So we reached out to the owner's representatives to try to find out what their prospects were, what their, you know, try to find out, but they haven't returned our call yet, so.
I got a point, did they go down all the property? You know, if not, people go down.
Well, you know, that was between the two parties, and, you know, I'm sure, given the lack of activity that the owners have had on that property, they were willing to deal, um, you know, I don't know any details, but I'm sure they were willing to deal, um, but they weren't able to come to a agreement.
I'm sure that the only reason that, uh, I guess, in that, uh, the, 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 underlying, uh, thing.
You know, I, there could be, I'd only be speculating, I know they were under pressure to reinvest their funds from the sale of their other property, so, you know, I think they were motivated to invest. And I, I don't see that there's anything else the township could have done, we, we, we took care of the rezoning in a, in a timely fashion, I think they clearly got the message, the township was anxious to see something go on there, um, so I don't think we could have done anything more to keep them in the, you know, at the table.
In, in, in the common, that maybe he just, I don't know if it is awesome at all, but whoever, uh, becomes in the, in that property, take a long one, sort of, teach, is possibly, brings the product, judging, appears, talks to them about, he just, you know, cleaning the building up, and deals with these five different problems, I mean, it's, maybe he's.
Well, I, that, that would be my recommendation, be sit down with the current owner and say, you've been sitting on this thing, and now, look what's happened, it's, it's, you know, deteriorating, um, and we, you know, somehow we should figure out how to get an inspection done, uh, of the property, you know, through the building department to say, you know, look, these are issues, that you're gonna have to address.
Right.
You know, it's, not in a way to put the hammer down on them, but just to say, these are the obstacles to getting this property redeveloped, how's any help?
Right.
If, if they call back, I would definitely, you know, recommend that to them, that they meet with, you know, the administration, uh, and hear the same things that the, the buyers heard, and I think the current owners need to hear that, uh, we're supportive.
Do we know if they're paying the taxes on the company?
Yes, I, you know, Justin's pretty good about keeping tabs on who's paying the taxes and who's not, um, and she's got the right of first refusal with the county now, which township didn't have a path, which is. Oh, that you're gonna supervise there, yeah, or maybe before that. There's that Mel Far property.
Well, no, that's.
Yeah. So since then, I guess, he's learned to get that right of first refusal, so, when the property comes up, she's got, you know, no, no limitations on it.
Well, I'm not too guessing, I, I was just curious whether or not the property owner paid or not.
Yeah.
I believe they're current, yeah, they are current.
The best of school. You got, you got this?
Commercial property.
Okay, all right. At least there is, you know, pretty special, uh, the option that we will put up.
Yeah.
All right, um, this was the old business, uh, the planning report.
Well, thi- this was a draft that you'd seen at a previous meeting, and, um, so, there was some, uh, request to add some information in there, uh, I think I added it on page three of the report, um, in terms of recommended projects, you know, I put a paragraph in there about, uh, promoting collaboration between the board, um, you know, Mrs. Stadler and I talked about that and felt that that would be, you know, something to, to work towards, um, you know, I, I haven't gotten any other comments on this, now, you know, given the situation with the planning consultants, you may want to enable this, and, uh, you know, get their input on it, but I would encourage, uh, the planning commission to get this report to the township board, you know, so they can include it in their budget discussions, or whatever else they need to do regarding these projects.
Question, the written, yes, the, the point. I think that's, I think that's the only, only thing to add.
That's the only thing, I, I got feedback on since the last time, yeah.
I mean, it's probably, uh, taking action, you, you give us the option, you're saying basically, you, you put there, approved it there, that I'll make it, or you can wait for the planning.
Yeah.
All right, I don't know, how, how is everybody looking?
Um.
Any real, uh, any real.
I'd have to leave that right now, it's, I don't have any concern.
Cause it does come up, basically, the thing, that, uh, we can work, uh, uh, quite a long time, uh, perhaps, uh, less, and, uh, this, uh, I have something else to, for that, the other, technology, you know, many changes we had, to, like, it's not, it's, it's, it's worth these documents.
Well, this, this is just a snapshot, annual snapshot, and really, you know, you, there's a third option, not to confuse things, but you could take out the recommended project for two thousand eighteen, and just give them a report on the two thousand seventeen activities, I mean, that's really what the state, uh, requirement is, is to give a report on, uh, on the activities from two thousand seventeen, so, I mean, those are, you know, that's another option.
Yeah. Perhaps it, well, have, have there been a brief start?
Um, I, I have not met with, uh, Carla Ward, also, yes, so, um, uh, watching her. You know, I don't want to say.
Well, you don't have to take out the.
No.
Not this, but, uh, as we've got, we've been seeing at some point, usually over some sort of progress, or, I don't think they, um, what's the.
Well, I think they will be at the, um, um, yes, Carla Ward, they'll be at the April board.
Good.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, I mean, do you have, do you have the group, court finding, city of Detroit, you got master plan, update, is that, is that what it is?
So the, uh, the state law again requires municipalities to, uh, notify their neighboring communities that they're gonna make a change to their master plan, so the city of Detroit is proposing two amendments to their master plan, uh, one of which is in such a remote part of the city, doesn't really affect, uh, Royal Oak much at all, um, the other change that they were making is, um, they're meming the future land use map, because they wanted to set designation for the area, then only bound, bounded by Norfolk Street on the north, uh, Cherry Lawn Street on East Chabot Avenue on the south, and Indian Street on the west. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, uh, from recreation to institutional, um.
So they're doing this, they're rezoning them for?
No, they're rezoning the property that's within those, that's bounded by those streets, those are the fourth street.
Right.
That define the property.
They're rezoning them from what, for what?
From public to institutional.
Was that a public recreation?
No, the school, the school, the school property.
Oh, that's where they're talking about, okay, yeah, yeah, they're rushing up.
And they're, they're changing it from recreation to institutional, so it's still gonna be, you know.
But there wasn't a recreation, the facility there, so, they, they have, they have, they have, that's been sold for a long time.
Right, now they must have someone that wants to use it for some kind of, you know, school, charter school, or something crap.
They do, I, I was just, my kind of, oh, yeah, that's right, it was a big old, yeah, uh, the fight upstairs, I think, I mean, the old community came to that, so, yeah, I'll be talking to her.
So, you know, it's one block south of Eight Mile, it's a couple blocks east of Wyoming.
Hmm, so they must turn it into a school?
It's gonna, I think it's gonna be a charter school or something, uh, right now.
Yeah, what was, uh, the name of the school that was before?
Okay. Keep the box open, John, the rest of the.
I remember, yeah, 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 right next to you.
Uh-huh, yeah, they have the big old, uh, big old field where they have, you know, we have our Eight Mile reunion on, on one side, on the, usually on the same day, they have theirs over there, and that makes huge fun.
Okay, so will this still be attached to Recreation Center?
No, no, they, I think they're zoning it to some type of, uh, charter school or something like that, yeah.
And so what happens to Higginbottom, will it still stand, and they're gonna turn it out?
No, it's about gonna be new now, it's, it's, I saw about a couple of years ago.
I thought it was more than that, okay.
I know, some years ago, yeah.
Okay.
Recording this article in the Free Press, uh, Detroit Jesuit High School and Academy submitted a proposal to the city of Detroit back in two thousand sixteen to purchase the land and the two buildings, the proposal includes renovating the Recreation Center and surrounding grounds, and demolishing the school building, the facilities would be primarily used, uh, by students of the high school.
Okay, so they're going to demolish Higginbottom.
You know, there wasn't a lot of info, we had to dig that out, there was not much information in, you know, you see the city of Detroit court finding was pretty.
So this is for the city of Detroit to, to, it's master plan to?
They're making a change to their master plan, state law required that they let all adjacent communities know, so, uh, this particular change was relatively close to our community, the other change was way down in the southeast part of the city, you know, in that area. So just receiving file, I, I would be the proper actual.
We have a motion here, receive file.
Well, look, some, well, we learned that we've been doing wrong is that, um, receiving file doesn't mean a board.
Okay.
Is that right? I'm gonna go vote. We'll pay a.
Okay.
All right, very good, okay, uh, do you have any thing on the, that, with this?
Uh, yeah, I had a question.
Okay, what is this?
Uh, that was an attachment to the, uh, annual planning report, and there's actually two documents attached to that, one is, they're basically two self-assessments, one is from, uh, redevelopment ready, uh, community, uh, certification is run by the state of Michigan, so the state has basically made a list of best practices for local communities, uh, in order to be ready for redevelopment, and, uh, so that's a checklist of things that the township should be evaluating themselves on how they perform, do you have an updated master plan, um, have you identified redevelopment sites, uh, is your zoning, uh, updated, and have you removed the obstacle to redevelop, uh, do you have a D D A in place, is the D D A ready to, uh, make their, uh, incentives available, so those are the kind of questions that are in that, that checklist, and then the other checklist is from Oakland County, and that's from Oakland County's One Stop Ready, uh, program, and it's a similar thing, uh, but it's, it's operated by the county, and if you go through the redevelopment ready process with the state, then, um, they will assist you with, uh, marketing your redevelopment properties, they'll put them on a state list, so that someone is Googling redevelopment opportunities in Michigan, real township's property will pop up, uh, and similar with, uh, Oakland County One Stop Ready program, if you go through that, if you complete the self-assessment, if you go to the training, both of these programs require that local, um, uh, planning commission members, D D A members, township board members get trained, uh, and staff members get trained in how the redevelopment ready programs are supposed to run, so the redevelopment ready process could take a while, it could take you probably, I don't know, three to six months, plus whatever time it takes you to respond to the outstanding issues in the checklist, like, one of the items in the checklist is you don't have an updated master plan, that's gonna take you, you know, six to twelve months to update your master plan, so, you know, it's gonna take that much time to, to go through that, but even if you don't go through and get the certification, the exercise of going through these checklists, and finding out where the township is, is a useful process, so.
Oh, how long does it take to know? Um, yeah, it was quite a long, it was quite a bit, so, but so far, if we were, we've already missed a proportion of.
They, they offer, you mean the training sessions?
Yeah.
They, they offer those on a.
Regular.
Regular basis, so there'll be another one in a couple of months.
And they say so.
Yes, in the training, yeah. But, but, you know.
You have to take, pretty much, you have to go through this all up.
Yeah.
Yes, you, yes, yes, you have to take the, uh, yes, you have to, to complete it and to get your statistics.
Correct.
Because we talked about this, and I said I wanted to, but I know that they're very, um, extensive and time to.
It takes a commitment from the township.
Yes, and.
May not be financial, or maybe time-wise.
Yes, more time is what they need to do.
But, but, like I said, I put the check, I put the self-evaluation checklist in here, just to have something that the township can use to measure progress by, so even if you don't go through the progress in the program, I still think it's a useful exercise.
I was, you know, in January, there was two, like, back to back, January, they're back to back, April, back to back, you know, uh, you have to have somebody dedicated just for that, and, uh, we.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you're going through the master plan, you're gonna be going through the master plan update process, so, I mean, you should be in a good position after that's done. But nonetheless, I, you know, try to put it in, plug it in someplace, in your budget discussion, or in your strategic plan, or something that commits to making progress on these things. Absolutely, yeah, and, and the Oakland County one is not nearly as, not nearly as onerous as the redevelopment ready program, so that might be a good first step, and if you get all that stuff done, then you're gonna be in good shape for the redevelopment ready program.
On the morning, you had a talk, you'll be at the capital.
Okay. Thank you.